I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Kirk, will you please call the roll. Trustee Mason.
Present.
Trustee Reinders.
Present.
Trustee Lepore.
Present.
Trustee Muller. Trustee Schaller.
Present.
Trustee Holzhouser.
Present.
Mayor Nitske Treiki. Present. Is there any public comment? Did you guys have anything to share? Nope, just hanging out, okay. All right, moving on to letter E, discussion regarding proposal from administrative consulting specialists LLC ACS for comprehensive organizational staffing study, job description review, and update, village-wide policy manual update. So it's a discussion. Does anybody want to take the lead on this discussion?
Um, I could.
Sure.
Okay, uh, trustee Lepore and myself had an opportunity to speak with the organization to Todd, who was the owner of this company, and he basically, I mean, he was very, it was very informative. He told us that however we want to curtail this program, however we want to shape it or mold it, or whatever we want to add to it, that we can do that, that he is going to depend on us to tell him what we are, what our end goal is, what we are looking for, and what we would like them to target. So I thought that was really, that was really good because it's not just like a cut and dry program that we have to follow every one of the, you know, the steps to it. It's we can, we can actually just, we could actually build this program as we go along, and we tell him exactly what we want to expect from this program.
Trustee Lepore, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll go further than, thank you. Actually, I had the pleasure of speaking with Todd from the consulting firm again today with trustee Schaller, and actually, what Rose's statement, trustee Reinders was stating is correct, they're allowing us to tailor this package pretty much the way we want it, as far as employment review, or if there's other services we would like to include later on, such as a comprehensive plan, which I know is something we have been discussing, updating recently. I like the interchangeable parts, I like the flexibility that this firm is providing us, and I think it's a pretty good fit for where we are and where we want to be. Thank you.
Trustee Mason, do you have anything?
Bottom line, yes, we've been batting this around for a little bit, and I think it's perfect because it gives us focus. We get the opportunity to evaluate our current structure, our staffing levels, our workloads, the efficiencies. I think it could tell us where we're short-staffed, I think it could tell us where we have redundancies. I think our job as sitting officials is to try to run as efficiently as we possibly can and manage tax dollars wisely, so I think this is something that we need to do moving forward. And I think I have talked to a couple other officials from other villages, and some of the feedback that I'm getting is they do it annually. I'm not saying that we have to do it annually, but I know that the comprehensive plan hasn't been updated since 2005, Mike and I spoke about that, trustee Schaller and myself talked about this too. I think, as trustee Reinders states, that this can be tailored. I kind of like the layout of it, I like the company, and I think in the long run, it could be saving us time and effort and spinning wheels. Thank you.
Trustee Holzhouser, do you have anything?
I would just like to, I guess, pile on to what my fellow trustees have said. I mean, it's the three-tier plan, organizational staffing analysis, job description review and update, village-wide policy manual update, those are all good things. A lot of times, you know, going through all this paperwork, I noticed the modernizing, 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 you know, and I think that's something that we could really use around here. I feel like they do it in an efficient timeline to get this done, and like, you know, trustee Lepore said, you know, it kind of opens up the door to maybe test the waters about some of the other services they provide, you know. They also, in addition to the comprehensive plan, they could also help us out with a strategic plan, grant research, and grant writing and maintenance, you know, so all things that this would be very beneficial to this village.
Yeah, and one of the things he said about the grant writing was, that's how he started out this business. He started as a grant writer, and he said, you know, he actually goes out and looks for grants for organizations, so, he said that, you know, he said, "That's what got me to where I am today." He said, "So, he said, "If, you know, if you guys need, if you need that service as well," he said, "I'd be more than happy to provide that." I mean, I think, I think moving down the line, I think moving forward in the future, we are, this is, this is going to be great for the village, and I know a lot of, a couple of the employees have already asked me, and I think Mike and I both talked and said, "Well, the first thing that they're going to say is, 'Oh, my God, is my job in jeopardy.'" And one of the things I said is, "No." I said, "This is actually going to make our village run more efficiently." I said, "And you'll see," I said, "They're going to talk to each one of you individually, and they'll ask you, 'What do you think about your job? What, you know, what, do you think you need more employees? You know, what's your scope of work?'" And I said, and I told, and I actually had a conversation today with Jennifer Vittori, and I said to her, I said, "Jen, I don't know why everybody's worried about their job." I said, "You, of all people, when you came here, the first thing you said to me was, 'Oh, my God, I don't have a job description.'" I said, "And this is the point of all of this, is to be able to have a job description, have a scope of responsibilities, every person that, that actually has a job here, to know what their responsibilities are." I said, "And, you know, and then we'll just run more efficiently." I said, "The whole village, you'll see a change." And she, so, you know, she was, she felt better after I had the conversation with her, so.
Trustee Schaller, since this was your, your little project.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the sentiment of all the trustees. I believe this, this sets the village or on a path, especially when we're looking at tier-one organizational staffing analysis. I think that's, that's extremely important for, you know, looking five or 10 years down the road in where we're going to be as a village, running lean and mean, and seeing where we move forward developmentally to, again, keep costs down and keep taxes down for these residents.
Okay, so that was just the discussion. Does anybody else have anything to add to that before we move on to the next item? So would we be putting this on the next agenda? Oh, it's on, it is on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, next thing is 2526 budget and tax levy overview. I asked for this to be put on because we have new trustees, and understanding budgets and levies and all that fun stuff is kind of hard to understand. I know everyone here kind of has dealt with it before, but I'd really like for John to sort of give a, an overview of how this really works.
Okay, let's start with the tax levy because it's coming up. It has to be passed, signed, certified, and delivered to Will County by the end of the year. We've levied 1.5 million since we took over the district, and I kind of ran some numbers today as to why we need it. Prior to the village taking the district on, the district used to levy $5 million for road and bridge. We took it on, currently, this budget year, the operational part of Public Works is about 3.7 million, and then that's funded out of our general fund, and then out of our general, out of our capital projects fund, we fund the road resurface program, which is 1.2 million. That was, that the district used to pay out of their levy, and in addition to that, any machinery and equipment out of Public Works in excess of $100,000 is also paid for out of the capital project fund. And we have two plows totaling $572,000 that are being paid for out of the capital project fund. So for fiscal '26, 43026, that's a total of about 5.5 million. So we're going to ask the board to, you know, redo, not redo, but to, once again, levy the 25 levy probably to the amount of the same as last year, which is 1.5 million. I know the flexibility in the property tax process is that if you can go up to, I think, Mike, double-check, tell me if I'm wrong, but you go up to 5% increase without having an open, an open meeting or publishing in a paper. But we have not done that. We've stayed at 1.5 million since we took it over. Now, we've used a lot of other resources of the village, sales tax and all the other to, to, to pay for that shortage, and it just, you know, it's kind of what we handle, we're done with currently. So, you know, we're using up more of our resources now than we took the district on. So, that's the levy coming up, and we did factor that in our budget for '26. This is the 25 levy, and it's going to have to be approved, that we'll collect in '26, which is still this kind of budget here. So, we did take an assumption that that was going to get approved. So, for, for the budget, I know that we incorporate the trustees, I'm not sure, I can't recall if I did the presentation in front of them or not.
Some.
I really welcome any trustee to dive a little deeper or come in and do one-on-ones on, on the budget, because we have about 11 different funds. Every one of them has a different purpose and requirement. So, because I know when we present treasures reports to the board and we're showing these astronomical numbers, I did add something to the May treasures report that's in the board packet, which is the last line, so we need to show cash investments at the end of that month, and it would then be very, very healthy, because we'd fund a, we're advanced funding multi-year projects. But I also included a line which is called, which is the cash investment forecasted at the end of this year.
Wait, I'm sorry, what page are we looking at?
The very last page.
Treasures report.
Oh, the treasures.
In the board packet for 100.
Not this one?
And a comment of.
Oh, okay.
I'll let you know that the treasures report, May 31st, has cash investments of $50,542,000.
Ooh.
The forecasted cash balance at the end of the year is $26,197,000.
Yeah, you can tell me.
Are they?
Yeah.
We have a wastewater treatment plant, so the $250 million that we have budgeted in its entirety, we have road resurface, heritage park, we have a very sizable master park land endeavor. Actually, if you wanted to see in packet on page, I think in the budget on page 75, which is near the end, it lists all the capital projects and initiatives, and that's, that's really the life cycle of a capital project fund, is it builds up, not each, overtime, and then it spends it down. So we are at the apex of our financial position. We are a very young community, and we're getting ready to do some sizable work, very expensive work, but very necessary work, and we will start to see more of fund bills in line with a community of our size. But on page 75 of the budget, there's a slide that identifies capital project fund expenditures. There are 17 different initiatives on it, and it equals $18,197,000 and change.
Say that again? I'm sorry, can you say that again? Can you say that again?
Yes, I was talking about how our fund bill is over $50 million, $27 million. The answer is on page 75 in the budget presentation, and it's a slide that shows the capital project fund expenditures, which is $18 million worth of work. Some of it is multi-year in nature, and others is just going to, you know, be incurred as fiscal year. But the point is, we've been building up for these, these items, and, which is essentially the life of a capital fund, builds up, it spends down, builds up, it spends down. Depending on when you're looking at it, it could be, it could be anywhere on the arc. We are at the top of the arc right now. So, I thought it would be appropriate to include where we take the money here at, when I'm presenting these very favorable numbers in a very early market. $66,000.
I see that, I see that point.
Does that, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, it makes sense to me, I guess. There's, there's going to be some questions, and.
Sure.
And I'm not going to ask questions, but I'm going to, well, I will ask questions for the public or for trustees to understand, because I get a lot of questions to me about the budget, and I'm going to give them to you so you can explain them, but go ahead, Mike, you had a question. I see, are you going to go about the 66?
Yeah, so the line item 14 says, "The county IGA 123rd Bell Sidewalk." My understanding, speaking with Joe, Mr. Baker, today, there has never been a, an intergovernmental agreement that's been executed by the village. So like, for instance, that money that was, that was set aside for 66,000, we know that that's not going to be expended because that IGA has never been executed by the, the board, the board trustees. My, my, my thought is, they would never go along with that, obviously. Where would those, where would those monies that have been allocated go? Would they be reallocated? Would they just go?
They would become unobligated, and we could use it for future capital projects.
Okay.
On that note, the very first item, the wastewater treatment plant.
That's where I was going.
We're going to probably finance that through the IEP A or through WIBE, or maybe use some village resources. So we'll essentially free that money up, but we will incur, we give an IEP, Environmental Protection Agency loan, they're generally below market, 2.5% or potentially as low as 0%, 30-year term. We'll have to fund it, right? So then we'll obligate something else.
Okay.
We'll free up funds for future endeavors.
Okay.
So, it's a very conservative budget in the sense that if it's potentially obligated, I'm entirely budgeting it, I'm budgeting it entirely, so that we, we know how much money is going to be in there with all these projects.
And specifically, may I continue?
Yep.
And just specific to that line item, I think there's been some confusion in the public in regards to the village in some way, shape, or form now agreeing to contribute X amount of dollars, in this case, $66,000.
But it's actually, go ahead, I'm sorry.
To the sidewalk improvement there. As I'm sharing with you now, that IGA has never been executed, and it will not be, and I, obviously, no one here has taken any action, but it's my impression that that's never going to be approved by this board.
It will not appear on next year's budget. You know, you know, our engineer was relatively new, and this could have been a life or a wildlife thing, so rather than kill off something that could, could occur, we left it.
Understood, okay.
And as clarity comes forward, we'll get rid of it if it's up to hand, as well as any other thing I heard.
My question to that is, it was somewhere in the 700,000 range that the cost would be if it, if we, if the village, which I don't agree that this board will, was to put a sidewalk from Golden Oak all the way to Lamont Road. So, I'm assuming, especially now since the county backed off from Parker to Lamont for now, and the sidewalk hasn't been discussed amongst this board, a retaining wall hasn't been discussed, a sound wall, none of these things, even though I know the sound wall's not our responsibility, but the landscaping, there's nothing really been discussed, and now that, that IGA, which has not been signed, will have to change. Why is it 66? Is that the number proposed from Parker to Golden Oak?
It's a number from several years ago, actually, I'm not stating.
That number is way low if they were.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think that the concern, I think, here was, is that where did that, is this a recent?
Yeah.
Request, or funding request that was submitted to you?
Okay.
Because the mayor was unaware of.
No, it's not, it's something that's been rolled for several years, actually, and I just don't think our engineer was comfortable, or we weren't comfortable with eliminating it of all this, because it wasn't completely dead, possibly. We'd rather keep something if there was a threat of all that occurring, you know.
So was any of that engineering done? Says includes engineering, so has any of the 66,000 been touched?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm working.
We haven't put nothing into the project at all. You get it, Bart, they were saying that the 66,000.
You asked away, go ahead.
And, you know, and I can, obviously, I can, I can pick up the phone and call you too with regards to this. But I think it's very good, in this context, the trustees get to see a lot of our back and forth.
Storage burn.
Throughout, believe for myself, some communications with Joe, they might see it on a billionaire invoice, and there would have been an opportunity to see the actual substance of what our communications are. So, also following up on that point, and see, you have the wastewater treatment plan. I remember you shared with me in one of our conversations that you were going to be allocating that, quote-unquote, cash, you know, from a, from a, from a cash reserve standpoint, but you're looking at other options to have, to actually finance that.
We are, you know, because I, the IEP A is, can't work right now, so, and I, and I know they capped the amount that they loan, so I was talking to Brett Westout today, if we could get 3.5 million out of loan over the year, there's going to be some creativity in financing that project.
Grants, things of that nature too, will all?
Absolutely, for sure.
And that $10 million mark that you have in this fund currently, is that a recent allocation, or was that a recent number that's provided to you by engineering?
I was, I was told today it's, it's pretty, pretty low, it's more like 15 million.
Yeah, okay.
That 15 million would get you 125 MGT, which is the million gallons a day, right? Quarter million gallons a day, 715 single-family homes, so.
That, that was my impression too, so.
It's pretty robust, it's not, it's not a mini-plan.
Okay, understood.
And of course, when you build it, you get your capture fees, MIA fees.
MIA fees.
So, I mean, we're trying to recover the cost of it over time as it builds out, which the money would directly go back into the capital project fund for future things. Now, capital projects currently, actually historically here, has never had a specific designated revenue. It's gotten all of its money from surpluses, from the general fund.
Which account did you say?
The general fund.
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought he said.
If we exceed, if we exceed 50% of an annual, the annual budget of expenses, it's over the max, and it, and our fund policy allows us to transfer it over to either the park fund or the capital project fund, and that's where this money came from. That's 20 years of surplus. We've never had a year that we didn't have a surplus in the general fund.
Wow. Are you going to continue with the presentation, or are you?
I'm going to stick it, I'm going to stick it. I absolutely guarantee you'll have a surplus.
So, one of the common questions, or one of the common statements I hear often is, "It's in the budget, we've got the money, it's in the budget." And, go ahead.
That's, that's the, that's the first hurdle of a project, is getting it in a budget, because that comes to the board, you know. Getting it into a budget doesn't, it's just like the entry point for, you know, made it past the first level. The big level is the board, the board has to approve all this stuff.
Right, but my point of saying that is, that the perception of, "It's in the budget, we have to spend it," is, is a perception that I keep seeing year after year after year, even from when I was a village, actually, when I was a township trustee, all the time, I still hear that, that statement, and I hear. No, not from you, not from you, absolutely, absolutely not. And I'll give a perfect example, just so everybody here understands where I'm going with this, or understand what I'm saying, is my ability awareness committee, we have a $15,000 budget, and I consistently hear, "We have to spend it, we have $15,000. What are we going to spend with $15,000?" And trying to explain that the $15,000 just didn't fall off a tree, it has to, money has, it has to come from somewhere. So, when we were asked, you know, "Why do we, why do we do the beer garden at Homerfest?" We're trying to help out our own cause, so we raise money to fill that gap. We do, we get donations, and we do things to, to make that point, but our committee is very much as, if we only raised, and I know we went round and round about this, if we only raised 5,000, I'm just throwing numbers out there, 5,000 at Homerfest, and then we raised another $1,000 because we got a grant, or 500 bucks from here, that's all we'll spend. We, we are keeping track of what we get in, and then we're going to stay right there. I think for our committees, I don't know what committees, I know you have the parks, I think we just got to, we got to pump the brakes a little bit, see where we can be under budget, and, you know, do better at certain things. One of the things I was going to bring up is the parks. Our, our, our park budget only has so much money in it, but every subdivision that comes in, it's a new park, it's another park, it's another park, and, and it's getting to be to the point where our budget, our, our funds isn't going to be able to cover the park, and in fact.
The maintenance.
The maintenance.
Yeah, and I know that our local motor fuel tax at 3 cents, it used to, in my, in my mind, I believe it used to bring in more than 500,000, wasn't it somewhere around 700 or something?
No, I don't remember that, no.
No?
Well, you realize, you know, when we passed it, you know, that's a rough, that didn't even be cut out there, you know, our expenses were well less than half of what they currently are. I, I, the park fund, the local motor fuel tax brings in about $500,000. The park fund has two departments, it has facilities, which is the maintenance, and it has development, which is the buildup, equipment and everything, and the facilities portion is $1 million, so it's literally twice as much as the revenue that comes into it. What we did in the budget is, we're trying to stop bleeding park funds to subsidize when we're outside.
Capital project fund.
So we transferred in money, we transferred in $500,000 from another fund, so that that park fund would not incur a deficit from facilities cost. So the equity that start, we started the year with for park development is there available. I know in a couple months, we're going to come forward with a revised fund policy, and maybe, either we continue rolling money into the park fund to offset the deficit, or we bring the park facilities into the general fund as a, as a department of the general fund with the local motor fuel tax, and let it flow in, it season out, and get, get the deficit absorbed with all of the other revenues that the general fund has. But I know that we have to amend the ordinance that, that we, that was passed to impose the local motor fuel tax, because there was a restriction on it.
Right.
So you have to lighten the language if we were to migrate that over. Either way, either way, same result, park fund is not taking the hit for the, the shortage between local motor fuel tax and facility cost.
Yeah, we've talked about that for, we've, we've been talking about that for the last year, John and myself, and saying that we needed to do something because now with all these parks, it's, it's just costing us so much money for the maintenance, and, and I agree with you 100%, as far as new parks, no, we, we really don't need any new parks. What we need to do is, we need to start upgrading the parks that we have, because the parks that we have, the equipment is really, some of the parks are not safe.
I, I mean, I'm not saying we don't need another park, or we don't ever need another park, I just think we, the board and staff, we really need to sit down and rethink how we go about parks, because if a, if a subdivision wants to come in, and they have an association, and they want to have a park for their, for their little.
Right, right, exactly.
I'm 100% okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
But we, we could start looking at "in lieu of," because that's going to help our fund balance.
So, one thing that trustee Reinders and myself and a couple of the other trustees have talked about in the past is, in lieu of taking land or a park on, or whatever the case, I think when the developers start to come in, we need to look at taking revenues instead, and foregoing the land, let's say, and that could help fund the parks and the maintenance, and the things that we need to upgrade the parks.
Exactly, and one of the things that we're looking at too, is we're looking at appraised value of property.
Correct.
So, that, you know, it, when, when a developer comes in, and, you know, their acres are, are appraised at a certain amount of money, that's how, there's a certain formula that you use in order to be able to know what your figure's going to be in, if you take cash in lieu of land or a park. So that's something that myself and Janie and the committee, we've been working on that for the last month, to try to come up with a formula, and what we think is, we need to do, we need to do another appraisal. Normally, the formula is driven by what the, like 33C and what the school districts do. So, the, the last time the school districts did an appraisal, they appraised, I think it was in '21, they appraised the land in Homerfest at $100,000 an acre. Now, Dan Kenny, who sits on our committee, says, "That's ridiculous, it's way more than that."
It is more.
It's way more than that. So, it would behoove us to do, to do an appraisal ourselves, to see what it actually comes in at, and then any future development that comes in, we have a new formula that says, "Okay, if we don't, if we at that point in time decide that we don't want to take a park or land, then there's a formula that, that's actually going to help us."
But I also think, location, location, location.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely.
Depending on, you know, where the location goes in, I mean, if they have a nearby park, and it's a community park, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
We only have so much funding that's coming in.
Yeah, exactly.
Without taxing, we don't have a. We don't have a park district. We don't have any of that, and the last thing we wanna do is tax anyone. So, I'm trying to work within the budget and the means that we have. And that's why I'm saying, if, if you guys can take the time, really dive into this and review it and figure, like, we're gonna have to come up with some ways to...
Can I ask a question?
But, uh, can you let John speak? I know he wanted to say something.
Although, I was asking you if it was okay.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, the, uh, town, uh, town center financial analysis estimate is a hundred and fifty thousand. I know we were trying to revisit that, John. And, um, so, the financial analysis, wha- what are you referring to there?
Actually, um, that just was relayed to me, that's a, uh, potential project that we need funding. So, I really don't have any elaborate data on it. I'm sure it's pretty robust, because it's pretty expensive. Um, so, it was a place setter.
Right.
Um, that, um, you know, was gonna eventually either come to the board or roll away from the budget.
I'm, I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm on seventy-five still, capital, capital expenditures. And, uh, it's under number ten. It's the town center financial analysis estimate. And, uh, we've got it listed at a hundred and fifty thousand.
I thought that was done already.
We just did that. We just did that two years ago.
Uh, well, I know we did, and that's why I was asking this question, but according to John, until it gets in front of the board, um...
Well, that's terrific, because I was hoping to keep it, because it's been around a year or so.
Because we paid a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for that, for that feasibility study.
Well, we did it, yeah. That was the feasibility study that was done.
That's the...
I will report back to you on specifically what that entails, okay? Just, because I'm, I'm kind of the messenger on this, I, I get data from the department as, um, we go over it and, uh, and kind of, I don't get a lot more of the detail of that. I, I, the equipment, I'm a little more into, with those studies, specifically departmental studies on that, getting that kind of details in.
Understood.
I want to make a comment though, when we, when we budget for, like, project improvements and such, lots of times, we have a long history of putting something in a budget that would stay, stay there as pending grant, uh, participation.
Right.
Yes.
So, you know, it's a nice way to, you know, you can do, put five hundred K in there, project improvements pending, uh, X amount of participation. You get the first hurdle out of the way, you know, you're closer to shovel ready, right?
Right.
Because, um, but, we, we don't want that to stump anything, you know?
Trustee Sheller, did you have something?
I do. Um, thank you, Mayor. Regarding ten, if that's a place setter, trustee Mason, I think that may, if it isn't been brought forward to the board, uh, that may be something that, to look into regarding our comprehensive plan and any Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Street studies where that all ties into a, a, a larger scope.
That's where I was going with that, is if we're, if that is not necessary, can we give it a different title? Can it be...
Well, definitely.
Yeah, that's where I was going with, thank you for saying that.
You know, in lieu of, right? You know, we're gonna do this in lieu of, yeah. I, I have to say, our, our, our budgeting style here, philosophy, um, was, um, uh, well, we, we kind of manage at the departmental, not at the senior level, but at the departmental line of life level. And, um, it's not just escape, but, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I'll come back. Can you...
I thought of it five minutes ago, I thought it was...
It happens, it happens to all of us.
It's a lot of stuff.
Can you, can you answer this? So, I get this question all the time. You have forty-eight million dollars sitting in your bank account?
No, fifty million.
And can you explain how that works? How...
Ten accounts.
We're not gonna have that after this year.
That's what I wanted to...
If you look at the treasury report, it will identify where all that money is from.
Mm-hmm.
It starts with the general fund and then it goes to, you know...
There's ten funds.
And then it's an environmental fund. Those two funds are actually restricted general funds, they're really general fund stuff. Uh, the outside world, the finance world, bond, bond and the rating world, measures our, our, uh, responsibility based on our general fund performance. If that's the one, you know, that we provide the services from and we manage, we try to stay within budget, we try to stay within our fiscal policy, um, the, almost all the other funds are, are either restricted, such as, uh, motor fuel tax. By law, we can only spend on certain things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, even our park fund is restricted because our, we did that deal worth, right?
Right.
Uh, but the other ones are more capital project related. We talked about that. Spend, save, save, build up funds, spend out, just keeps going.
Because we get a lot of interest in more money we have.
Now, twenty, you know, twenty, what is it, twenty...
Four.
Twenty-four million of it is in the capital project fund. And that's meant for, um, you know, our financial, long-term, um, material projects, infrastructure.
It's a free...
With that being said, that, again, that, that just goes to show is, in a, in a, in a larger picture here at the village, being strategic, those are earmarked funds. We need to be very tactical on moving forward with continuing to keep property taxes low, but increasing development so sales tax goes up. Because there will be other issues through capital project funds that we'll want to fund, but as trustee Rinder said, we're, 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 we're spending a little bit more than we anticipated towards parks and upkeep, so we are, we're not in a fi- fiscal crisis, but in order to avert that, I think we need to be a little bit more, um, task-oriented for, for the years ahead of us.
Mm-hmm. Well, I just know when we, when, you know, if I call one of you guys and you guys throw something out there, well, just like for, for example, the study that we just talked about, right? Was that budgeted for?
Well, we had a place setter for professional services.
Right.
And at the time, which we're talking February, we thought a grant writer, comprehensive plan updates, and we budgeted forty thousand dollars. Okay? So, obviously, we're gonna go over. However, we have another line item, which is a contingency expense line item. I don't like to use it. I use it as a hedge against revenue shortcuts. Our revenues have generally been good, we have a very conservative way we forecast it. We're on schedule, or on schedule so far. But if, if, if things got really bad, revenues got bad, and we're starting to, and we exceeded our budgeted expenses, I'd go come to the, the board in the fourth quarter and do a budget amendment. But I don't think we need that right now. So, uh, professional services resides in the general fund and in other, other department category. It's got fifteen, twenty lines in it, it's pretty sizable dollars. I'm more concerned about the total of that line item than I am about that one line item.
Right, right.
Um, but the reality is, is that we had a place setter that was not sufficient for what we're going to be doing in the near future.
So, right, so just like, my husband and I have different bank accounts for different things, and, you know, if I wanna go shopping or something, it's nice to know where we're over and where we're under, like, what, what's going on. So, so, perfect example is when we're proposing something like, "Hey, we wanna do this study", it would be nice to hear, "Hey, if you're looking into this, we have this budgeted, we're gonna be over this, so we can pull..." It's just, it's nice to know, because then another project or another idea or another plan, "Hey, we did that, let's do this." And it's gonna get, and not saying that they're like that, I'm just saying, I can see from years past on how the things started tumbling of, "Well, hey, we got the money, let's just do it." That's not the case.
A lot of larger communities that are much more staffed now, with multiple CPAs on, on staff, do line item budgeting and they do, they do numerous budget adjustments monthly. I would advise against that for now.
I'm not saying adjustments, I'm just saying updates.
No, well, I'm, I'm, what you're saying, right?
We just need to be cognizant.
We're on here, we're gonna spend it here, so it gets, it gets moved, right? And you could do that all year round, you could have fifty budget adjustments, you know what I mean? Roll into that.
I guess what I'm saying, before this board makes a decision on voting on something...
Oh.
I would like all of, everybody to know, "Hey, we budgeted for this, we, we're not gonna use that, but we can use it from here and we'll be under..." Like, just give, give, like, like you just said, for what we were just talking about, you just said, "We budgeted forty," because that was gonna be one of my next questions, "Is this budgeted? If not, where does it come from?" And you just explained it perfectly, which I think makes everyone feel good. But if you were to say, "Everything in, every line on them is spoken for, this is gonna come out of something else," I think the board might take a different look, or postponing it to a different budget. Am I, am I right?
I, I think, I think what I think the mayor's saying is a brief explanation when we're looking at stuff, and we have to be cognizant and thinking about the future. But at the same time, if you know, this was used, this wasn't used, this is being reallocated to this, uh, as you just stated, Madam Mayor, um, you know, the town center financial analyst estimate, it's, it's done. We did that. So, now it could be renamed and keeps our eye on the ball of what's transpiring. The, may I ask another question? I had another question for you, Mr. Sawyers. Uh, the transportation plan and engineering, we got a hundred and seven thousand, uh, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars allocated in the budget for that. What, do you know what that consists of?
Transportation, thirteen.
And do we know what that's for?
Maybe joking elaborating on that, I, I, you know, we meet with the, all the...
Understood.
And, uh, that's, that was just...
I think that's a study that was done by H R Green that's gonna be forthcoming, that will be presented to the board.
On which one?
To the board, that'll be coming forward to the board. I think they're wrapping that up now.
I, I was trying to remember which study was that.
The transportation study.
Okay, the one, oh, H R, H R Green.
Yes, that was conducted by H R Green.
Okay.
I have got a question if you're done. You're done?
Yes.
So, the four thousand square foot pole storage barn, wasn't that, as trustee Reiner's, I think, reminded me, it was, um, wasn't that like John Robinson's idea for a barn for parks?
Well, you know, at one point it was, and then it left the budget for a few years. And, uh, because there were some, you know, there were some issues with the design and such, and there weren't some more elaborate, and how long they would, it would, then obviously, you know, we're renting storage, so, I was dealing with such. So, it's kind of, probably it was more, it's more expensive because we would save money a lot.
This was something I'm gonna be looking at the next budget year, is either, um, looking at building a new facility, getting out of Anaco, which we're paying, I think, approximately six thousand dollars.
I mean, we've been trying to get out of Anaco for years.
Yeah, and then building a new facility, um, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, we'll see what the township's gonna be doing.
Yeah.
We've been talking to them and see how that all plays out.
I think we just, didn't we review that to see basically what the rent was gonna cost versus what the building was gonna cost?
We're, we're talking to the township and seeing how this is all gonna play out.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I just think it's important to know, like, perfect example, you're right, this was off, and now it's back on, and I had no idea that it was being reconsidered again. It would just be nice to know that, hey, or if, I'm assuming that would be parks, you know, almost as if the parks department or all the departments had their wish lists lined up. And I understand that sometimes things are gonna come up and you're like, "Oh, I didn't think of that in the beginning there." But it'd be nice to see what they're planning, just so we know. Like, we just said we can take off this or add that. I just think it's important, so we can stay on task.
That, uh, that's true, except when you ask the department what they want, they tell you what they want.
Yeah, they do. They tell you everything. I don't mean want, I don't mean, that's not what I meant, I'm sorry. When I say wish list, I mean need list. Give me your wish and give me your need. I want to know the needs, like, what, yeah.
There is a difference.
I need to know the needs and that's what's gotta be taken care of first. Because I, I feel like we've, we keep buying plow trucks. I, I feel like we've bought so many trucks and I'm, I'm like, to the point of, how, what's our, you know, what's our fleet look like right now?
Well, and I've looked at that through public safety and public service, and about half of our fleet is becoming, uh, updated, and, uh, half of our fleet is outdated. Most of, uh, the equipment that we inherited has a lifespan of about ten years, and a lot of these pieces are, have a, uh, expiration date, so to speak, and, uh, we're approaching that on quite a bit. So, I think what Mr. Woods has been trying to do is, um, keep us current so we're not purchasing it all at once.
I get that, but it's also important to know where the lifespan of what we inherited is, because I know we are talking to the board about some things, it'd be nice to know how, how long we used it for, what was, you know, what was the...
Mr. Woods can give you that list, because he has a current list that he's brought in front of public service and safety.
And A and F.
And A and F, too, that's correct. And I actually caught a mistake on the last one.
Yeah.
But, uh, bottom line, he could tell us, uh, over the last, course of the last three, four years, what has become obsolete and been replaced, and what is currently about to be obsolete and/or replaced.
We're really, we're really trying to play catch-up with the vehicles that we inherited from the township. Um, what, uh, Mr. Woods is trying to get us on a regular schedule of, every few years, we, uh, buy a new vehicle. Once they've, uh, exhausted their lifespan, that vehicle could get retired and we'll have new ones currently. And that wasn't currently done by the township, we kind of inherited, uh, an old fleet of vehicles, and right now, we're trying to play catch-up. We're trying to maintain our services for the community. At the same time, you know, we putting Band-Aids on some of these trucks, we're not having to buy a whole fleet at one time, we understand that.
Can't be done.
Um, but we, we're getting ourselves on a regular schedule of, uh, vehicle replacement, so that's in the process.
So, he can give you a list, Madam Mayor, he does have one, and he has the dates of the machines, what years they were purch, or what years they are. We know what years we took them over. And he could tell you what's been replaced, what's, yeah, and what's going out. One thing you don't wanna do, I was in the transportation industry most of my life, and, um, one thing you don't wanna do is have all twenty-tens or all twenty-twelves or all twenty-twenty's. You don't want that, because that means in ten years, which is a normal lifespan, or depending on, uh, the financial stability of that, uh, company and/or village, um, you do not wanna start replacing three hundred trucks all one year, or every other, you know, every other.
And also, the other thing, the other thing too...
Agreed. Your safety issues.
The other thing too is, I mean, Kurt...
Correct.
How long has it taken us? How long has it taken Public Works to get some of those vehicles? He might come to us today, but he might not have that vehicle for another year. So, because that's how long it takes to get it.
So, the logistic turnaround on a truck is probably a good year to fifteen months. Uh, if you put in the order today, you might see it at the end of twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Um, that's an average even in the private sector, so it's not about municipalities.
Yeah.
Um, when you have, uh, as trustee Ho-Hozer just stated, you want some value left on that for trade-in, but there's also safety concerns at some point, too. Like, year eight, you're starting to really evaluate that equipment. At year ten, you're looking at trade-in. At year twelve, that piece of equipment's dead.
And I have to give it to Director Woods, he's really good about that.
He's doing a great job.
He's just good at it, I just feel like we're buying a different car every...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know.
He's doing a lot of ball juggling.
He is. He is doing a lot of juggling, because he's looking at stuff where he could, he could still recoup some money on it. And I mean, just like he's, he's switched around the fleet a little bit. Like, if he has to get something new, then he might, if it still has some life, he might give it to Parks, or vice versa.
And I'm all for that. I'm all for giving a piece of equipment. I think at the last one, when we got the mini excavator, because ours was having issues and was going to die, we actually said, "Hang on to that piece of equipment," because I would rather work with the township and with Parks, than not have something if something else went down. So, the idea is to have enough equipment to continue to service the public, but be able to function properly.
Exactly.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, just wanna clarify, John, our back and forth here, and also with Mr. Weber, the, and also for the public, the IGA that has not been executed by the board in regards to 143rd Street, is an IGA that states that would run from 143rd Street from State Street, Lamont Road, all the way to the west of Bell Road. That sidewalk and such improvement, and I'm reading this now, just give me a second, was estimated at, and the mayor was correct, approximately $763,000 of contribution from the Village of Homer Glen. Now, that IGA, as I said, has not been executed by this board, and if I'm a gambling man, I doubt the director's gonna do it, okay? I do wanna clarify, though, too, that there was an IGA back from 2022. That IGA dealt with the actual construction of an intersection in Bell Road and 143rd, which is just about done. Joe, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
And Martin Gill.
Yeah, that's just, no, no, that, this is actually the section that is being constructed right now, from 143rd and Bell Road to Golden Oak, which we're aware of. The steel fencing is up there now. That was approved back in 2022, I believe, Michael. That was approved back during that course, the project was as ongoing right now.
Because that is part of the Bell Road expansion.
Intersection, 143rd and Bell Road expansion. The section between Golden Oak and Parker, which is the current issue that we're, that's been in, we've been talking about recent, more recently, was never executed.
Gotcha. So...
Technically, I'm sorry, technically, it hasn't even been discussed, because the project in its entirety was Golden Oak to Lamont.
Correct.
Right.
So, there would have to be a new IGA that was presented.
Correct. Doesn't cover it.
And we haven't seen that.
So, just for clarification, the one that would run from State Street, 143rd Street, Lamont Road, all the way to the west of Bell Road, that one has not been executed by this board, which was estimated at north of $700,000. The one that was executed back in 2022, that well-predated anybody over here, was executed. That dealt with 143rd Street intersection, Greystone Drive, and some other spots. That one, the Village, back in 2022, did agree to the sidewalk improvement. I believe it was a five-foot sidewalk improvement, some retaining walls, things of that nature.
And that project is currently underway.
That was already obligated, that was already approved way back when, some three years ago.
Prior to this.
So, just to clarify, because people are talking about 143rd Street and Bell, and what are we saying, so we don't get any confusion. So, John, I wanna just clarify that that amount in that capital project may be an amount that's still remaining for that intersection.
Okay.
Okay? We just need to clarify that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right. It is 6:24. Do you guys wanna take, make a motion to adjourn this meeting? I think this was good.
Yeah, I think it was very informative.
I think this was really good.
Mayor, I just make one recommendation. If anybody has any questions, please contact John directly for any clarification on any of these budget issues.
Absolutely. John or Lisa. Absolutely. But, I think, I think sometimes it's good when we all hear, because sometimes I don't think of the questions that they ask, or sometimes the telephone game, because you can't talk to everyone at once. By the time Kurt starts, and it gets to me, it's a totally different animal. So, I just think sometimes this is best. I prefer doing this every Wednesday, every board meeting, in my opinion.
Oh, I like it, because we're, you know, we talked about how many times...
And not specific to the budget, I don't mean, but about different things.
On different topics, because I like this, because I spend a half hour, 40 minutes on the phone with trustee Reiners, and trustee Sheller, and trustee Hoheuser, and then over to trustee Lepore. Sometimes, Nick, but, you know, but, I mean, it's really time-consuming. So, absolutely, I don't mind this at all, because not only are we being transparent, but we get to hammer out some of the issues without taking it in front of the actual Village Board meeting. By then, we should know what we're discussing.
Yes. All right, is there...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Trustee Mason, trustee Reiners, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll be back in 4 minutes and 30 seconds.